Good afternoon. We're going to invite you back to the afternoon session for the Clickat County Commissioners for April ninth, two thousand and twenty four. And Mr. Christopher is taking a break. He'll be back with us in just a few minutes. So we have a department update from our treasurer Greg Gallagher. Thank you. You're looking at me like, come on.
I couldn't remember if I was first or second, so I was just like.
Good, that's me.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to give you guys an update on the surplus sale that we're working on and kind of some of the resolutions that were in the consent agenda and just make sure that I haven't haven't been over to kind of update. We're trying to get this moving fairly quickly. So we are looking to have a surplus sale on five items in May. We're looking about the sixteenth to the eighteenth, I believe, is when the sale is going to be. And the items that are going to be in there are pretty normal as far as we've got some heavy equipment, but the one thing that's not normal that we've not done before is we have some soil at the Columbia Gorge Airport that we are going to be surplusing. So I just wanted to give you guys, that's really kind of the main purpose for me coming over, just so you guys knew and everybody was on the same page with that. We worked with the city attorney in the Dow. Actually, I shouldn't say we, the PA's office worked with the city attorney and the Dow's and themselves and determined that the airport is joint property and that the soil is in Washington State and we are a member, you know, we're, we're part of the joint owners. And this was the best way to surplus the property using the state statute of the state of Washington. So, so we will be, that will be part of our auction.
Is there a minimum bid on that?
We, we will set it up differently. Yes, I don't know that we've, we've never done this before. So we're kind of, yes, we believe that. The other thing that we're trying to figure out is exactly where all the pieces are, but we're trying to get it going because we were, we really wanted to start it earlier. We just kind of got busy with taxes and some other things. And so we we're just moving forward.
And so when that, when that sold and that is property that is on the airport and came at the airport, that will then get transferred to.
So that's a great question. So, and I think that was part of one of the cover sheets, but I wanted to make sure. So I think what we're going to do is we will set up, there's a fund six thirty-two, which is Treasurer's Trust, where we hold deposits for other things, planning things or whatever. And we will set up an airport account in there so that when we receipt that in, it will go into there. It doesn't go on to any other portion of the finances for the county. And then we will remit the money from there to the city of the Dow's because the city of the Dow's is actually the physical agent. And so they need to get the money eventually. So that's kind of the avenue. And again, that's our first attempt at this type of situation. So we'll look at it. I've worked with the auditor a little bit to just, we're all on the same page of how we're going to do that. But, but that's really the most unique thing. Other than that, normal surplus property just goes back to the fund in which it has been living in as the salvage value. So these things are public work, so we'll work with them. And they came to us here a while back and we've been trying to kind of get to this point. So, but we are hoping that in May we will have that sale. But we will have the hearing on the thirtieth.
And that's an online.
Online. The dirt may not be online. We're still trying to work that out, but we will, yes.
Okay.
But that's kind of where we are. And so we wanted to, I wanted to make sure I got in here to just give you guys an update on that. Like I say, I don't know that we've, we've auctioned off somewhere. We did a trailer house or a mobile, whatever, whatever that was. And that turned out good. We did that online and that, I mean, we got money and it got moved on time and it worked. So, so, you know, and there's a lot of, if you go out to the public surplus webpage, they have a lot of stuff, different types of things if you browse through. So it's not, you know, this is not a normal, but they do have a, they have a category already of surplus soil. So, yeah, but, but anyway, we'll, we'll see how we get to and work through and we're working with them to get all the parts and pieces and we're, our timeline is fairly short, but I think we can get this done and get these things moving and move on. So that's really all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great afternoon.
Yeah, you too. Thank you, Greg. So new business.
That's the joys of being chair.
Well, I didn't hear him offering, so.
If you want, I'll read one of them, just to be fair.
A hundred one. Which one do you want?
I'll start with this one. It's already up here.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, we have before us a proclamation for National Volunteer Week. Whereas the Clickitat County, the County of Clickitat joins other counties across our great state and nation to honor community volunteers during National Volunteer Week. We celebrate and pay tribute to the amazing efforts that volunteers put forth each and every day. Volunteers make a difference in our libraries, our neighborhoods, schools, churches, faith-based organizations, community and civic groups and government agencies. Volunteers are an invaluable resource and are the heart and soul of our cities, counties and nation. Whereas volunteers are catalysts to create positive changes in our communities by bringing their compassion, their time, their ideas, talents, technical skills and professional expertise to strengthen and help our county flourish. As society's needs change, volunteers are at the heart of community life, lending a hand to create a better quality of life for our residents. They provide support to recreation activities, public education, health and social services, housing and food service organizations, public safety and emergency preparedness agencies, literacy learning and environmental and economic initiatives. Volunteers help communities provide basic human services, spiritual support, neighbor-to-neighbor assistance and empower those who have been marginalized. And whereas volunteers have played an integral part in this county's proud history, they are the foundation of our community life. They contribute their time and talents to organizations that promote and support the arts, philanthropy, historical preservation, civic engagement, business and education, literacy and efforts to protect and support our environment. These contributions improve the lives of all citizens and help maintain our local economy. Volunteers collectively demonstrate their power to make a difference and are an inspiration for all of us to follow. And whereas the County of Clickitat recognizes that citizen volunteers are key to assisting the county to meet the needs of the citizens and accomplishing our community goals, we acknowledge that volunteers help unite our great county through their selfless service. And whereas during the upcoming week, we call on all community members and organizations to help us think, celebrate and recognize the contributions of all volunteers. Now therefore, we Commissioners of Clickitat County do hereby proclaim April twenty first through April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four as National Volunteer Week in Clickitat County.
Thank you. And I see which one you left me. I think you should have done it. You're our representation at WAC this year. This is a proclamation that came to us because of a retirement of a valued member from WAC, Eric Johnson, if you remember him. And he, I cannot say how much I appreciate Eric for the help he's given me just in the short time I've been a Commissioner. He's irreplaceable and I know I have known him such a short time, I can't even imagine what a value he's been to the counties where he's been a Commissioner and also his years on WAC. So this proclamation is going to Eric from all the counties in the state for his retirement party, which has become kind of a roast. So you'll have to find a little humor in his proclamation. Washington State Association of Counties Executive Director Eric Brian Johnson Day, May thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. Whereas Eric Brian Johnson born May one nineteen fifty-nine to Ralph and Marilyn Johnson. And whereas Eric Brian Johnson was rumored actually to have been born on the planet Krypton and sent to Earth in a small spaceship that landed in the countryside somewhere in Lewis County, Washington, where Ralph and Marilyn discovered him. And whereas Eric Brian Johnson, while growing up, also showed a unique interest in sports and athleticism, excelling in team sports and individual achievements, eliciting some rumors of superpowers amongst the regulars in the local barber shop. And whereas Eric Brian Johnson enjoyed a short stint as a lead guitar with the Beatles, playing live on stage with a group during a short concert at the Country Leaders Conference. And whereas unfortunately, the early superhuman athletic success in sporting pursuits did not continue into adulthood, especially in his golf game, nor did he gig with the Beatles. The rumors that Eric Brian Johnson was a real superhuman subsided as they weren't true. And whereas Eric Brian Johnson chose to focus his super skills on serving the needs of the counties of the state, of the state of Washington. First running for and winning two terms as a Lewis County Commissioner. His platform included a promise to provide free burn barrels every year to every resident. And where Eric Brian Johnson, after his resounding political success, then turned his leadership skills towards working for the Washington State Association of Counties for nearly nineteen years, sixteen years as executive director. And whereas Eric Brian Johnson has chosen to step down as WAC Executive Director effective May thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. And whereas every county in Washington State will forever be grateful for, to Eric for his steady and unwavering leadership to the counties during good times and challenging times, for his fierce advocacy and support for county government issues and for his wise and thoughtful counsel to every generation of county commissioners, council members, counselors and numerous other county leaders. And whereas the Washington State Counties and WAC and its staff have benefited enormously from Eric's generous service and guidance. Now and therefore, be it resolved that Clickitat County Board of County Commissioners requests that the citizens of Clickitat County join them in celebrating and honoring the service of Eric Brian Johnson and proclaim May thirty first, two thousand and twenty four as Washington State Association of Counties Executive Director Eric Brian Johnson Day in Clickitat County. Adopted this ninth day of April, two thousand and twenty four. Thank you. So it'd be interesting to see if each county had the same proclamation come to them or if every county was a little different. Thank you.
Thank you. I have never seen a proclamation like that.
No. But he is a great guy and he has a good sense of humor. So it'll be fun for him to hear from everybody after all those years of representing everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have an update from Skamania. I think we're a little bit early on our program. So okay. Abby, would you like to go forward ahead of time?
I would be fine doing that, Commissioner.
You saved us. Thank you.
Oh, good. Well, good afternoon. I am sorry to be joining you virtually instead of in person today. Always a pleasure getting to speak to the Commissioners. Today I am representing the Clickitat and Skamania County Developmental Disability Advisory Board. So in about three years ago, the two counties of Clickitat and Skamania combined the Developmental Disability Services under the umbrella of Skamania County Health Department. And at that time, an advisory board was formed and over nine members were added, including a self advocate. We never want to lose sight of who we represent or who we serve in the community. We want to thank you for your continued support of Developmental Disability Services and for the work of your board in supporting our board. In the past three years, we've accomplished quite a lot. I was not a member of the board, so I don't take credit for all of the amazing work that's happened. But every year, the board holds six informational and collective meetings with our service partners and those meetings are open to the part, to the public. We hold an additional six work group meetings where board members work in three areas, resources, outreach and recruitment and events. The Resources Subcommittee researches locally available services and supports available for our community. We produce a monthly newsletter and we are in the process of developing a website specifically for the developmental disability community in both counties. The Outreach and Recruitment Subcommittee is tasked with attending community meetings to represent the board and to actively recruit new members, which is always a challenge. The Events Subcommittee organizes and participates in activities that support, inform and encourage our community. A couple of examples are resource fairs that we've held in the past and an employer appreciation ceremony, which has happened annually each fall. All board members volunteer their time to help with these planned activities. While we are a volunteer board, we are appointed and we are in desperate need of new members as our original appointees are now at the end of their three-year term. We are awaiting the approval of two candidates who have submitted their applications to both boards of county commissioners. So we would just ask today that you would help us in spreading the word that we are a thriving board committed to improving services and opportunities for our developmental disability community in both counties and that there's space for more families, more passionate individuals to be involved. In the past, we did have an appointee from the Clickitat Board of County Commissioners that attended meetings and we hope that there is someone who will be appointed soon to attend our meetings and participate in our activities. Thank you for having me and for all that you do for our developmentally disabled in Clickitat County. And I'm happy to try to take any questions that you guys might have at this time.
Thank you, Abby. Where do you hold your meetings, Abby?
Our meetings happen virtually and to do that has, has actually been, has been more convenient for folks as we have people attending all the way from Golden Dale to Washubal area in Skamania.
And who are your six partners?
Our six partners. So our six work group meetings might have been where you heard six. But our, our service partners that typically attend our meetings include folks like the wonderful people that work at the ESD in both counties, people that work for Employment Service Division for Washington State DDA, the Developmental Disability Branch of Social Services for Washington State. We also have some employers that attend, employers that are specifically hiring folks in high school or straight out of high school that are looking for work experience and then other vested community members and self advocates.
Great. Mr. Anderson, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to remind that it is about to be National Volunteers Week. And so thank you for the volunteers that all volunteer their time with your organization.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Anderson. I was really happy to hear your proclamation and I will be emailing the rest of the board and reminding them that they are, they are valued and appreciated in this community. So thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you. Thank you very much for going early. We appreciate it.
Of course. Have a great rest of the day.
Bye bye. So any items under unfinished business?
Yes, we added town hall discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Lovely timing.
Yeah, perfect.
Question I had a procedurally with town hall discussion. I know we originally talked about each individual getting to ask a question, each commissioner getting to respond, then the person getting to ask the following question. I guess I'm worried about time, time management. That even if we, if we do that and each person gets to ask two questions, even if we limit commissioner response and alternate them like we did in the first one, which I think was good. Even if we put ourselves a little clock that said one minute, you're still looking at five minutes per question. By the time they ask and each person gets a minute here and, and if you give them two questions, now each person gets ten minutes and now you get a total of twelve people to get a talk during town hall. So I, I haven't broached the one-minute commissioner response question with you guys. I don't know how long-winded we all are. I worry that our responses are going to get cut down on their time. So I would like to see how open you are to a one-minute response. And then on whether you think we should continue with the two questions per individual or one question per individual so we can give more people a chance.
I'm really worried about how when we first promoted town hall, it was the friendly community get together, ask questions, and that has morphed. I'm getting emails concerned about getting into the meeting, having space for the meeting. Could we choose an alternative space because of our, our subject at hand that's in the forefront? I know it worked well during the homeless discussion that we had to open up the downstairs and we were basically downstairs, which was able to open the doors and spill out into the foyer, which I believe gave us more room. The school does not have the technical background for us to use our Zoom, so we can't use it. And I really don't think the Grange is much larger than what we can offer downstairs.
So.
So I think the crowd may be way bigger than the one-minute and then responses.
No, it's, it's quite possible. I mean, that's, when we originally brought this topic up, the topic was.
Right.
I mean, I wanted Grange's schools, things like that. And that was, you know, nobody's going to show up. And maybe if we weren't dealing with this topic, nobody would still show up. We don't know. I would say the Grange is bigger than this, but now if you change locations, people are going to complain because you changed. So I think it's going to have to be maybe a downstairs open, every chair available brought out, not just some of the chairs planned, presented down there. The way I did it was solar was leaving, you know, four or five chairs open in the front row. So, you know, we literally call out the next four people, sign-in sheets or moderator. We call out the next four people. If you're in the room, come forward. If you're downstairs, come up and then we take four Zoom. Now we know they're in the room for the next one. And that's kind of what I was thinking about doing again. But again, if we allow two questions per individual, now you get twelve people to take all the space. So it was.
I, I'm fine with one question per individual. With the topic at hand, this is, in my mind, the exact moment when you would probably use a moderator so that you can create themes of questions so that we can actually talk about more than just one thing. And then that also creates, I guess my, my statement is, is there's going to be a huge potential for a bash session or statements that are defamatory, statements that, you know, somebody's just trying to attack rather than find solutions. And so especially as we saw how heated last Tuesday was, that's what I'm concerned about is that it could easily be, you know, we've all seen the personal attacks towards each individual on this board from time to time. And I think we, that's the purpose why you have a moderator so that we can act, the questions that are asked are pertinent to county government and county business in answering that. And it's not a political grandstand of a situation.
I, I don't personally have a problem answering any questions that the public has of me. And I believe that the general public has a foul opinion of a moderator because that limits their access or so as it wasn't planned that way, I would hope the board wouldn't change it a week before the thing. And now all of a sudden throw a moderator in there. We did it your way. I don't think this way will be horrible. The board chair can always remind people to refrain from personal attacks. It is a town hall, but it is still the board chair's meeting. I wouldn't frown if that's what she chose to do. And reminded everybody to stay civil and not clap. And I mean, that's just standard protocol in this room or in any meeting that this board has ever had, even at the Grange.
So I guess that goes to the standards of conduct of what the board chair would ask, you know, as we open that meeting for expectations. And I'm fine with that so long as people file, follow the expectations of decorum and civility.
And moderator for me, yes, I believe people were you know, kind of blindsided a little bit last time because they didn't get to ask the, the question that came to the forefront. When we began on the town hall process, this is what we were envisioning, but now we've migrated to this. So we have to figure out how to supply this meeting to the public. For myself, since I'm going to be answering questions and paying attention, I would prefer to have a moderator. But in the fact that we're gathering questions and they're fielded and we, that person keeps them to the timeframe, we move on. That person keeps order in the room so we can be available to be accessed just to answer questions, if that makes sense. I feel like that's a lot to be able to answer, pinpointed sometimes hard questions that you're trying to come up with answers, but yet manage a meeting that might be contentious, that could be a very large group. So having that moderator help for me, I think that's a good place for me to be, is to have a separate moderator in the room. Running the meeting, a facilitator, I guess is what you call it, not a moderator, but a facilitator. They keep the meeting civil, they keep the meeting moving, they collect questions. Usually they're in a written form and they submit them and then they sort through them and call them up.
Right, but I, I just would like to remind you that there was two approaches to having the meeting and we chose to try both approaches. And now it seems like the board's move is to take the other approach and flip it back to the first approach. And if that's the way, feel free, have it, take it off my plate.
Not entirely. It's because the meeting was hijacked and because the meeting is going to have a totally separate focus and lineage of what questions are going to be, rather than just questions about our county and things that might be on your mind that you want to come in. We were being the friendly county, offering town halls to people that had asked to them, for them for a long time. And that was so somebody could come in and ask about the road or somebody could ask about noise ordinances or things that they can't get to our regular meeting and ask about. We're now pinpoint focused, laser focused on one subject. And it has shown that it is a contentious subject. I don't think that, and I'm just going to use the word is fair, to put a county commissioner in charge of a very large meeting that could be contentious, even contentious with us, but contentious with division in how each side of the county feels about the subject. You're going to have different people in the room with varying degrees of how they feel about the subject. And I would prefer to have a facilitator that can professionally handle the room, but yet field questions to us and we can answer. And that's not changing anything that you are asking for, except for making sure we're able to keep it in order. It's still an open meeting. It won't restrict any of the questions. It's just a professional facilitator. So we're not restricting anybody's subjects, anybody's questions. We're just keeping it in order. And when we go back to regular town halls that we want to try and you can walk in and ask about the neighbors' cows or any of those other subjects, I think that's totally appropriate for us to be able to field a room of anywhere from one to ten people that might show up for town halls like we talked about. And those are our commissioner friendly meetings that'll be held in each district, but this has now become a different subject.
Well, I guess I would say that I I disagree. I think a town hall in Glenwood would get forty or fifty people, not ten. I think Bickleton would get forty or fifty, not ten. And for about four minutes, I've been trying to figure out how to word this. So bear with me. Well, let's just say I have no problem running that meeting if you would like.
And as Chair, I would like to make the decision for the public, for the look of that meeting, for the look of the board, that we choose an independent facilitator with those skills to run a meeting of that type.
And we is you and you look for it. And we is you and you look for it. Cause this was my plan and you guys have taken that away now. So you do it. I believe we have, you two have taken that away. Jake hasn't spoken yet on his opinion on. Whether there's a facilitator or not. So which side were you choosing, sir?
Do you have questions of what I'm looking for, Jake?
No, no, I think I made it pretty clear my concerns. I think it's pretty clear the way that I always try to respond to comments and in this ability that I always try to use in all communication. I've also been. Regularly accused of all sorts of things. And it's really difficult when you're trying to act as a board. Yet people make things personal. And it makes it more difficult to do the business of the county and. I was hoping that we would be having a town hall that would be, you know, on many different subjects. And people could come forward and ask about the cow in the neighbor's yard or what our plans are with. Septic system down in the Dallas port area, you know, stuff like that. But I think we know exactly what everyone wants to talk about. I think that.
Please don't say we because that lumps me in and I don't want to be argumentative. But I believe there would be many topics, so.
I, and that's, that's exactly my point. I want, if there's going to be a lot of people, I want there to be multiple topics that are brought up. And the way to do that is to use a moderator so that a moderator can go through the questions that are provided. And then with those questions that are provided, the moderator can choose different topics so that we're not just talking about. A hundred people who want to talk about one thing and we answer the same question over and over and over again. And for that reason, I, I would support Commissioner Zoller's. Chairwoman's prerogative to find an independent moderator to do that. I did that on the last one. I think this is important. Once this elephant in a room is behind us, I think then we can move in and have more of a, you know, the, the open town hall. But I think I firmly believe that, that there's going to be a lot of people who want to talk about one subject and all the other subjects will be less.
Okay, then I will find a facilitator, a proper one with skills for a meeting. But no, no questions will be let out. That's. I believe that I heard that from the public last time. And I agree with them. I think they should have time.
And, and as for that, because using, it's too close, using a moderator. If people want to ask two questions, like a, a one question and a second question, I would leave that up to the moderator to see how they. Field that, kind of like we did last time, you know, question, follow up, hear your responses.
What is your, the board's opinion on? Amount of time commissioners get to respond? It would be nice to have that worked out. As again, we're all very long-winded, especially when we prepare speeches.
I would, I would set a goal for a minute, but not set a timer.
I agree.
How about, how about a timer, but only is for observation?
I don't understand what you're saying.
We have a, we, we can look at the clock. And if, when it gets to fifty-nine, she turns it off. But that kind of tells you, you're running long without interrupting you with the beep 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 beep.
Well, Robert's rules of order state you should use three sentences.
That was decided last week. This was supposed to be an in-person, but I don't know if this has changed now. So I don't know.
I, I think what we can do is, the change was in person, so we're expecting crowd downstairs, upstairs. We can do it like this and then have it just on, so it's not our faces. I can, I'm fine with that.
Why? Well, that's my other problem. Why, why are we not? To me, it should be split screen. They're on, the person speaking is on half the screen and the board's on the other half of the screen.
Like this, I turn them to the two on.
Right, but in. I guess I'd say when we were dealing with citizen comment earlier. Or last week or something like that, I was finding that for a lot of the time, it wasn't like this. Maybe it was just a glitch in the matrix for the day or something. But this is the plan right here. Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
And that, that will be considered in person. In my mind, I was just thinking about the meeting we had downstairs and we were in person downstairs with. The large group.
If we have the ability to walk around the room with a microphone. And then you're handing the person the microphone and then they're, you're answering the question, then you walk into the Jake and he does the next one. That's, that's how I would facilitate a town hall if I was walking around the Dallas by myself, but, or Dallas.
Right, but the difference is, is I think we're going to see a huge number of people from the west side of the county that are, you're going to have, it's going to be a fifty fifty. The people locally here are probably going to show up, but, and then there's going to be a lot of people online. And so this would be.
Right, so the walking around the room thing is not going to work.
Okay, I understand. That works. Okay. Yes.
If we, if we can.
Did we get enough likes? I did it.
The next question I have is where do you plan on sitting the meeting facilitator? Who's in charge of keeping order and decorum in the room? If the public is going to come up here to ask a question. I would imagine, what are you going to move one of the mics over here on the side for the facilitator over there? I just, one of those logistics people.
No good to talk about it now. Any, anything else with that meeting? Other unfinished business, anybody?
Insurance, I was in that last week. Well, or whatever. Maybe I didn't want to talk about it last week. It's the week before that, Friday of the special meeting. Insurance premiums are going up, but not near as highly as we expected. They, some of them, they actually think will only go up three or four percent. Like property and whatnot. Because some of the, some of the. A lot of the insurance companies aren't lumping us all in the same pool anymore. You might say that we're not having to pay for hurricane damage. We're, we're going to start making hurricane people pay for hurricane damage. So they're, they've, I guess the, the only way I can really say instead of having a US-wide. Policy, they've had more of a regional approach. That's caused some increases for some and some decreases for others. And we're going to see a decrease in some of our coverage and yes, an increase in other, but. Fifteen percent is a good guesstimate to start.
Or fifty percent increase?
The twenty to thirty that's been presented to this board recently. And I think that fifteen is going to trend. Right about there. And we are in a good spot with our reserves. On that board with the decision we made last year to up them even higher. That put us in a very good position to allow lower coverage this year because the insurance companies feel we're more. Less at risk because we're a far better financials place than a lot of the other pools are.
So isn't that secondary coverage? Cause we're in a pool.
Oh, we have, we have secondary, thirdary, fifthary, seventhary.
It's the secondary and third and that, that is splitting it out. It's not the, the pool itself, right?
Correct, but like that secondary and third. If I remember correctly, they haven't made a profit. I think they've made a profit two years in the last twenty. And so it's being. Readjusted and now second, third is more of a second, third, fourth, fifth in that same little block.
You're telling me the insurance company hasn't made a profit?
Some of the secondaries. For some of the coverages of our pool have not made a profit more than two years out of twenty. I found that interesting myself.
I, I'm just, if they haven't made a profit, wouldn't our expenses be going up far more?
Or they get subsidized by the federal government for it, yes. It was interest. Lot of discussion on. I mean, most of the open discussion and classes and presentations were on. Jail litigation. Lot of good ideas passed around the room to, like I mentioned, the life monitors, watch things. All the different ways to mitigate. I noticed in one of your questions earlier, you had the body scanner. Question on is there a body scanner on not to get, well, they found out that those really don't work very well for sixty-five thousand dollars piece. So for the most part, the, the plan is still there where you, they'll pay for twenty, twenty-five thousand of it, but. A lot of the new counties are not doing it because they're not finding success in the ones that already started. So now it's kind of shifted over to drug sniffing dog. Which if you can't, you, cause you can't do a squat coffin. Don't allow them to do a squat coffin. So I don't know how the drug sniffing dog is going to check for hidden objects, but. It was, it was very, yeah, it was. Bottom line, insurance costs are going up, but not as much as we thought. And we are still far below where we were with the old insurance. That's my update.
Just, I've got to go at two thirty for contract negoti- or negotiations with the bridge. But one thing I, I did want to bring up as. I wanted to, to make sure that we'd talked this morning about the, the questions that came forward. I would say that it could take quite a long time if, depends on the amount of depth to go in. And I wanted to make sure that Commissioners Zoller can. Cut it down or, or set priorities, you know, like this is what we need answers to first. This is what we need answers to second. And so something that might take a lot of man hours, that's not that important in making decisions. Push that to the side and, and maybe to make a, a point system one through four. This is what I want to hear. Sooner rather than later. And I just wanted to give you, make sure you're good with that. And just letting her do it versus us agreeing on it, because it would take us forever to do it together.
And I think some of that has shifted with the staff working on what they're creating. They, they've identified absolutely what looks like a priority and then everything that comes under.
Right, right. This is more for this, this questions of the sheriff, not ours. I know we have our own internal, whatever Jen and Rob are working.
I would take whatever information this board provides me whenever they feel like providing it to me. So I'll take what I can get.
Well, that's the goal, right?
I understand.
Hey, I just wanted to have that conversation.
You have a hand up in the audience. I know. My peripheral over here.
We did, yeah.
You can hold it up for the picture.
Well, it's under regular agenda. I don't want that funny one.
Would you like us to stand, man?
Did I miss that one?
Well, I don't think it was past you, you know? Great.
Yep, you're holding it. Are you holding the right one?
That's as close as we've been in a month.
I know, I was like, act friendly.
Come back next week, we're team building.
Act like we like each other.
I don't know who that is and we, yeah, she's a troublemaker. I like him.
Oh, that's great.
Yesterday and he said thirteen pounds since last year. I apparently like candy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was wondering why you're taking pictures when you first came in.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. I love the bus. Thank you.
Is Ms. Finch?
Yeah, Tia. Not here, is she online? Okay.
Or do we have the, the disability thing? Are we doing that or no?
No, we already did that.
In the hallway?
Yeah, it's great. And they were all volunteers, which was wonderful. So it fit into. Everything we were doing today. So no other reports, miscellaneous pro, reports or unfinished business. If not, we can catch Tia and.
And then.
Move forward. Oh, here comes the leash.
Somebody, will you let Rob know? We're probably going to be ready for him.
We're early. Come on in. Yeah, come on down.
We had a bunch of extra money and we gave it to somebody else because you weren't here, but it's okay.
They beat you, Chuck. Yes, you are. Yeah, now you don't have to worry about it.
Is that the microphone like dream, by the way?
No, it is. So this year, the kids zone, just to start with a little update, like I said, the kids zone is returning. We have programs for the kids, workshops, crafts. Book reading times and all those sort of things, as well as a. For the general event program, a, some things going on every hour. So we've secured a keynote speaker. His name is David Steltzer. He is the CEO and founder of Azure Standard, a nationally recognized company. They do abundance and healthy living and things like that. So he'll be speaking and we are also working with the Clickat County Solid Waste as well as gorge sourdough and. Some other beekeeping seminars. I'm really out of breath. Oh my gosh, I apologize.
Got to do the elephant.
I know. So for the show, like I said, we're in a really good place. I have. Completely sold out all of my indoor spaces, which amounts to a hundred and thirty. Last year we only did eighty-six, so it's almost double, I guess. And then these vendors and exhibitors do primarily range out of Clickat County. Though some, I have a couple coming from Las Vegas and a couple coming from Tennessee. So pretty far. And we did go to.
If you need windows, they'll be there probably.
The, we did go to the Portland show. We went to the Tri-City show as well as the Yakima show to kind of. Hunt vendors and try to keep it in our area. So we have a really good variety. This year we did introduce admission. This is to promote the sustainability of the event, because I love sustainability. The, we kind of looked at the shows that we attended, right? And then kind of tried to figure out a market average for what would be good for our area. And then added some different options to make it accessible for all demographics. So the base fee is eight dollars. If you donate a non-perishable, non-expired food item, it'll get donated to the local food bank. And you get three dollars off your admission charge. Yeah. And then kids eight and under are free and seniors sixty-five and up are free. And then much like the county fair does, it's free on one of the days. So Sundays, since it's a ten to three day, that's the, going to be the free day. And like I said, we do aim to promote sustainability. Clarification on the waiver, we were hoping that that would take the place of lodging tax this year. Understand that comes out of a different budget and I totally understand where you guys were coming from. I knew it was going to be a hard push from the get-go, but I just figured some. Clarification on why we asked for that instead of lodging tax this year was necessary. But I don't. I really want to grow the event. Grow our income from the event so we can do more and make it more fun and more appealing. To everybody, draw attendees from even further. I've been tossing around the idea of kind of a spring festival. With a home and garden show. I thought that would be quite fun. But bottom line is, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time, clarify why we asked for the waiver. And show you guys that we kind of are moving in the right direction with the sustainability factor. And then so far for the chamber as a whole, it's been a really good year so far. So last November, when I did that presentation to you guys, we. Um, so last November, when I did that presentation to you guys, we um, told you that we did two hundred and thirty-four events. On our calendar for the whole year. Right now I'm sitting at four hundred and fifty-five. I know, crazy. Um, I don't have exact numbers on the directories yet, but we've done some significant additions. Um, based on that list provided to the library or provided from the library to us for that as well. Right now, our social media is sitting at a reach of twenty-five thousand.
For you.
Which is pretty crazy. Um, so we're doing a lot more in-house marketing, like we told you guys we would do in November. So I'm very excited for that. It's been a really good year so far, just in quarter one, um, just based on those numbers. But I really just wanted to clarify why we asked for the waiver. But I totally understand where you guys are coming from and I hope that you guys attend the event and see how amazing it is because there is a lot going on. A lot.
Do we have the official time, start time or the official when I'm supposed to be there time?
For the beef cook-off. I'm shooting for two. I'm finalizing some program details now so I can get my programs printed and stuff. But I'm shooting for two o'clock.
I am returning from vacation like that Wednesday. No, I was trying to get something on my schedule, just to give me an idea because I won't have email between now and then. So if you email me and I don't respond, I'm still good.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah. And if, um, I am still, while we also are sold out with like the inside spaces for the vendors and exhibitors. I have a couple more spaces left for food vendors. Um, typically we've done, well, last year is the only year I could speak to, but. Last year we had about four and it worked out really well. So I'm trying to hit that number again. I don't know why it's kind of more difficult this year for that, but. Hopefully I'll get that.
Have we thought about workarounds for full days?
I have heating booked and um, yeah, so I have, I have more heating booked. There's not much I can do. With that particular building.
But you've worked with Public Works. They're like, yeah, okay, this is a good thing to put there and this is not.
We, they've mentioned that we could do patio heaters, which I've booked through our pipe and drape company that we go through.
I just, I remember last time that they thought like the food item should be on this other circuit.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there is a little bit of a layout change. Um, so last year we had the kids zone in the building. This year it's going to be in the first kind of third of the beef barn. So that won't be as drawing as much electricity from the main building. And then um, the food vendors are going to be in the sand shed. So moving them back to where they were the year before. So. Yeah, and that's actually moving the kids corner is what gave me the capacity to have more room for vendors, which is good because more income. Sustainability. So, and you know, right now, sitting at a good place with our income, it doesn't even. Um, count the admission because it's kind of a variable that is unknown right now. I imagine that we could see a dip. Because we're actually tallying per person this year, uh, whereas from what I have found previous years, they've always done structured estimates based on like car counting and stuff like that. So I imagine there might be a dip, but I wouldn't really consider a dip myself. So that's.
I consider myself a dip.
But um, yeah, I just, I really wanted to update you guys on that. I'm not trying to go around anybody's backs or anything, but. I think, I think um, staying informed with you guys is really important. And since the home and garden show was not included in any of our asks. Or anything with our contracts with you guys, and it's a big thing that we're doing, I thought it was really important just to focus on that for a second, especially since we're. Under thirty days out now. It's crazy, so, but.
So when you've been touring around other home and garden shows, has there been any of them that charges for parking?
Um, the Portland one did.
Okay.
Yeah, they did. They, when I went to that one, it was twelve dollars for parking.
That was Delta Park though, wasn't it?
I'm not quite sure. Portland stresses me out. I wasn't paying attention.
That facility is owned, essentially you might as well call it owned by like a port district and it's anything in there is mandatory parking. Parking is totally separate than the actual.
Yeah, that's what I.
It was, it was, for them, it was twelve dollars for parking and then twenty dollars per person per ticket.
Wow.
Yeah, so, but that's Portland. That's a whole different economy and a whole different.
Right, no, no.
Yeah, so um, if I remember correctly, Tri-Cities did ten. And then um, I believe if I, I think I paid nine at Yakima show. So, and.
The Portland one though.
The Portland one, well, we actually ended up going to the sportsmanship.
Schramers, construction, I mean every.
Yeah, it was huge. And we ended up going to the sportsmanship, not the home and garden show there. Because I have been seeing how we can reintroduce that element back into the show because I do think it's a great piece that showcases our area very well. Um, but it was a lot. It was very overwhelming. But I plan to my, you know, in the next five years or something, really grow the show, make it more robust and. Fully self-sufficient and self-sustaining.
Well, you are running out of spaces.
I know, I think I'm going to have to do another full building. I know, I know. So hopefully, but that's, hopefully that's the case and we can do a bunch more and everything like that. But yeah. Just wanted to up you, update you guys and clarify the waiver because I think um, in-person communication is really important, so.
What's the cost for the vendors?
Um, it ranges between a hundred dollars and two hundred dollars. In that building, there's a strip of concrete. That is my top tier premium space. I actually think that one goes for two fifty if, if I'm remembering correctly. It's been a while since I looked at it because I sold out like a month ago. So.
Well, concrete floor, dirt floor.
Yeah, you gotta pick one. So, yeah. Is there any other questions or anything? All right. Well, thank you for.
Doing absolutely great. Every time you come back, it's, you're a fireball.
Well, thank you. I try to be. The, the energy comes from somewhere, but I don't know where because I don't drink coffee. So.
Good, we won't.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Being noticed, just so you know.
Thank you. I really appreciate. You guys have a good one and thanks for putting me on so quickly.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Think it'd be a bee taste tester.
Oh, you're just a taste tester?
That's awesome.
Oh, you, I thought you were cooking it.
Yeah, so did I.
I was originally thinking I was going to, no.
Moving up. That's great. No, I wouldn't either.
Unfortunately, after that energy, I might be a bit boring. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, so it's just uh, Mackenzie and I today and rather than make her go through the whole report, I'm gonna let, we'll do solid waste upfront. So go ahead and.
Oh, I've got them. Yeah, same. I just have all of them. Um, I've mainly just been working on the cleanups of course, so Lyle is actually this weekend. Is our first one. Um, White Salmon Benjen is the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And then Centerville, they wanted to do it on Earth Day with the kids, so that's going to be the twenty-second, which is a Monday. Uh, High Prairie, their initial, they have a couple different um, tiers to their cleanup, but their first tier starts the twenty-second of May. And then of course, Goldendale is May eleventh. High Prairie is going to be June and then the second High Prairie tier is June twentieth through twenty-second. And Dalzport has, is officially doing their first one this year, their little mini cleanup. And that's going to be May seventeen, eighteenth. They've got the bins from Republic and everything.
Oh, they decided to go bins instead of transfer station, huh?
Yeah, I talked to him about it. We had a lengthy conversation. Um, and basically the transfer station there didn't think that they had. The room to maneuver people coming in and out. So that's kind of.
Oh, it was pulling teeth to get this transfer station. So I wasn't surprised.
And then we, I just passed out and I think you've already seen Commissioner Christopher as the flyer that uh, Mackenzie and I think maybe Commissioner Christopher put together for. For the Goldendale cleanup, so. You take a look at that, so.
Did Clickat sign up for cleanup? They've done it before.
Yeah, I've not been able to get ahold of the gentleman that typically organizes. I've left five or six messages.
I'll, I know what's happening, so I'll get ahold of him for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
One thing about these cleanups and then Mr. Eric talking about the new barn they're building out there, it just seems like tomorrow it'll be fair. It'll be August.
And have demolition derby for fair.
There you go. Summer's almost gone and we're.
Yep.
Still in April, so anything else?
Um, just that I have, uh, last time, Mr. Christopher asked for some more data from Republic as far as some other recycling metrics. And I have asked for that with the quarterly report they're sending me, so hopefully I'll have more information on that soon.
Yeah, that was, that was uh, kind of in response to what we recycle and what we don't recycle in our last bit of questions in the town hall. Uh, was any continued updates from Republic on what we are recycling or aren't or what's changed? Or are there changes or how much is toxic and blah, blah, blah?
So I've recently went through the, sorry, I've recently went through the uh, Republic contract. I'm going to go through it again. And noting, there's a lot of information that um. The original contract is uh, was required from Republic and from us back and forth. And, and I think um, I need to work with them to kind of um, re-energize that and making sure we're all getting. Information going back and forth. So uh, it just over the years, I think things have changed or dropped off and we. And so I think they're worth visiting with them about again because they're still in the original contract and if it's still relevant and, and I don't want them to do work. That we don't need and vice versa. So, but I did notice there's some data in there, potentially like recycling data that we're supposed to get or. Work with them on, so. And I still haven't heard from Republic. Uh, they're still working on, I believe, I guess is a better way to phrase it. Who's going to be responsible because now in the new contract, they um, will, um, am I sure the proper term? Moderate risk waste at the transfer stations, they'll haul it out. And uh, the only difference is now we pay for transportation, but we've all given ninety days notice to the, to the current vendor, which may first or should be. A new vendor, which is Republic or one of their subsidiaries, but um, they haven't identified that yet, so we're still. Waiting to get that information from them, so. Anything else?
By the way, just so you know, I screwed up when I picked the date. It's the second Saturday, so if anybody calls and wants to know if they can drop off oil and that kind of stuff during that, the answer's no. Because I picked the wrong date. Blame it on me.
Okay, thank you, Mackenzie. She's doing a good job. I appreciate that. Uh, financial updates, just a few things. Um, supplementals are due April twelfth. So Jen will be working on that. Quarter one report is on your schedule for April thirtieth.
Well, I thought you were done with those sheets I gave him over there.
First quarter report's on um, April thirtieth. It's on your schedules and the landfill payment came in yesterday and we're on track with the budget. So.
At, you have the number?
She didn't give me the number.
On track with the budgeted number.
The budgeted numbers with what we budgeted to come in.
Yes. That's good. At least it's not below that.
Well, I'm curious how accurate on track is.
She just mentioned, I think she saw it last night when she was.
It's not low, but I, I have a feeling it's gonna be, we're gonna get more than what we budgeted, so I kind of were curious with the number.
Um, you saw the IT report, so uh, they're off doing their IT stuff. So if there's any questions, I get Randy, I can have Randy back to you. I don't think he. Nope, it ends, so uh, George sent his, we sent his report for code. So if you have any questions about that, I can try and answer them or uh, I can have George get back to you.
I was hopeful George would be here, so.
I know there's one on there.
For him that she might be able to answer and I can't talk to her outside of this room.
So, if you'll make time for me after the meeting, I think I know which one you want to talk about and I can give you the, uh, much more of the backstory. Um, from how we got there to here and then of course, we can.
If that doesn't work, then we'll bring it back in this room again, I guess.
Okay, yeah. I, it was, I made a mistaken assumption. It was my fault. Our reports are usually in the mornings, so everybody booked the mornings and then when we found out it was the afternoon, they all had. Things to do, so that's my fault, not, not staff's fault. I made an assumption, so that's why they're not here. They're all. It uh, freed their mornings, not their afternoons. Um, so I think so, from HR. Um, big, one of the thing, big thing we're focused on is we did have the safety review that I talked to you about. AWC came down and met with us for a couple of hours and there's, uh, that's our third-party vendor for, for safety and they, they represent us in. Uh, workers comp cases. And uh, she came down and we went through a five-page. Almost like when you went there earlier, but this is for safety, reviewed all of our policies, um, all the ones we should have. And uh, they're going to work with us on um, getting those policies, the ones we have updated and the ones we don't have implemented. Um, they're also going to do training at no expense, so they're going to come down on June twelfth and, and do safety committee training. Um, for the safety committee members. I don't think we've done that for a very long time. Uh, while she's here, she's gonna uh, provide training to the facilities on ladder, ladder safety. Um, and uh, facilities, because we have a lot of new employees. And then uh, we have now, uh, so there's going to be a lot of, a lot of work. Lot of policies we need to update. Our accident investigation forms are going to be updated. All of the safety stuff is going to be. Either um, reviewed and renewed or, or um, new stuff added. Um, so we currently have two uh, L and I rules. One was in place last year and the other one's new. So we have a outdoor heat exposure rule that came out last year. Basically, when the temperatures are above eighty-nine degrees, all kinds of things go into place that we're required to do for any employee that's um. That's ex- exposed to things. So anything above eighty-nine would be the, the day after tomorrow through October, I think. Um, so there's a lot to be done there. I will say the public works and the other departments that typically. Uh, work in that environment already do a lot of that stuff, but it's uh, it's an L and I rule now it's the law, so it's not voluntary anymore.
But I would also um, caution that while I believe Public Works is well aware of that, I'm not sure. Everybody is aware of that.
I understand that. That's why I'm mentioning it.
Multiple things from inside the county that we have a communication problem and things aren't getting passed, so please make sure it's.
Well, we don't have a policy yet, so. Yeah, yeah, because building coach has people in the field, accessory has people in the field. Um, obviously the deputies are in the field. Uh, so we have a lot of employees that work outdoors and so this will um, not just Public Works by any means. And so once we get that in place, plus the union's committed to working with this because it'll be an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement, so we have to bargain. For those covered by collective bargaining, what the policy is. So um, so that's underway as well. And then the one that's. Going to generate a little, a little consternation with some employees is there's a wildfire smoke rule now. And uh, just to give you the brief summary, L and I's emergency rule requires employers to monitor air quality. And take action when outdoor workers are exposed to wildfire, smoke and air quality index at one-on-one or higher. And some actions are required at sixty-nine, which is fairly low, fairly low. Um, so at sixty-nine is basically they, they encourage us to do certain things. At one-on-one or higher, um, we are encouraged to provide respirators at no cost to workers and workers can wear them. If they choose, above one-on-one, we must provide fitted. Air respirators like fire department wears and employees are required to wear them. But at the, and that's at a level of uh, five hundred or higher. I mean, it's a wildfire. And we had employees in that exposed to that last year. We had folks um, working in that kind of environment and they do the best they can, but now it's not. It's not uh, voluntary, it's mandatory. And that's an extreme there.
I'm hopeful that part of our policy.
Being smart.
Is we, we're wise enough to know that when it gets to a certain level, we're not going to be mandating that they're out there holding a sign on the side of the road. We're doing something like that, that they need a backup job is my point. I'm hopeful that we have plans. So that when that happens, they know that they don't just get to go home with pay. There's, here's your backup job.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to explore all that and, and uh, again, that's the extreme. That's why they call it the wildfire.
Is this going to entail that we have that equipment to ta- do that air quality testing?
A lot of that. Well, we can, you, DQ and.
They, we have multiple health uh.
Yeah.
Monitors within the county to, the question is, is what's the cost um, to outfit everyone? Is this just for uh, government workers or is this for any business?
Uh, that I don't know. We're exploring all that.
It started with the orchard workers is how this started. Is orchard workers exposed to smoke and that's how this law was created.
I mean, they, they initially talk about uh, wildfire, smoke, protect farm, construction workers, roofers, road crews. And anyone else whose jobs keep them outside. So, so we're going to work all that. I'm just giving you the.
But that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out if, if every firefighter, smoke jumpers and everything has to have a respirator now.
We just were notified that we have to have this. AWC is going to provide some boiler plates. We'll have to work with the union on this. Again, the wildfire smoke is the extreme.
Well, that's why I was warning you when you work with the union is we need to figure out what their backup job is. Because that's going to have to be negotiated too, that by the way, we're not just sending you home at ten o'clock.
The one challenge I can see is um. The one challenge I can see is, um, is potentially, for instance, um, public safety. If they're, uh, directing traffic, I mean, uh, you know, we had, somebody has to, if a road's closed or um, I think there's gonna be circumstances where it's not necessarily a crew of fourteen or fifteen people, it's one or two people. And how do we do that? Um, so that's what we have to explore and negotiate and, and work through, and no, it's, I've been informed that the state will not provide the respirator, nor the fitting, nor the testing. Um, will be required to do that.
Unfunded mandate?
Those, what?
Unfunded mandate?
So if that's five or ten or fifty, I don't know yet, we're, we're working on all that, I just every time I mention it, somebody grumbles, I thought I'd just throw it out to the, to the bigger audience, so we can as we, as we work through that, so we can be, be in compliance with that. So that's, um, that's amongst the other day-to-day stuff, uh, we're really focused, these have to be in effect June first, so we have to get busy.
During safety, do they ever, um, check for, do we have to have first aid CPR, certain places?
You know, we talked about that and I can't remember the answer, uh, they offer it, they offer the first aid training as, as many others around here do too. Uh, I'll have to check, I asked a question, I can't remember, Casey might have made the note, because I know in, in other states, uh, every building that has so many people has to have one person that's that's CP, uh, that has first aid training, um, I know we asked her about that, um, I will follow up with you on that.
Okay.
It's a good idea if it's not mandated.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
So. Uh, so HR's, and you've seen IT's doing the same thing for IT, for, for security, whole series of policies, guidelines and reviews and procedures to update what we have and make sure we have all the stuff we need to have, so. So I think that's it.
That was good.
You got a question?
Oh, I don't want to, but I got to. I just want, uh, on the record, that the Board of County Commissioners has no direct oversight over the um, code compliance officer, that individual is underneath you, there has been questions that have been brought up in public.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you very much.
Based on the calls I get, quite a few people know that already, so. But we will have a discussion about that, since you brought that up, uh, most likely May, on Commissioner Christopher's return about where, where that department may
Lie.
may go, so I think that's, that's still a discussion that needs to occur. Um, but I'm assuming Commissioner Christopher wants to be here for that.
Why start now? Why start now?
Start what? So anyways, I think I've covered everything, I, um, if I missed anything, I apologize if you have any questions, uh.
I think this is the first time you've had none of your reports, uh, show up, uh. You're late, let's be honest.
No, we tell them through you under the bus. We've assigned all kinds of new things to you, when you, when you're not here, that's what happens.
So I, you know, I know we're, we're, we're all putting a lot of time in on, on other, on other projects, but all this work continues.
Yeah.
Staff is doing the best they can to keep up.
Would just like to, to commend you, um, and especially, uh, Jen, on the number of hours that you are putting in. Uh, with Smart Sheets, I get to see how many hours she's working in a day, and I'm, I'm amazed that you keep her, keep giving her candy, whatever it takes.
Thank you, Commissioner, that, as I've said many times before, and I'll continue, they have an amazing staff, and, um, they're the ones that deserve all the allocates, and I appreciate you mentioning that.
And thank you to Randy, uh, you guys are doing a.
I went down that far. And Casey's been putting a lot of work in on.
As, as Casey as well, so, I apologize for missing.
No, 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 thank you, commissioners, and Commissioner Chris, if you have time afterwards, we can talk about that one issue, not, I'd call you.
Needs to be done, so, yeah, I'd like to know.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else on the agenda?
I have, I have this two-thirty and I need to call them beforehand, and so, yeah, I'm, are you ready for a motion? Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, noting that we do not have a workshop for April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Um, I will note for the record, uh, there will be a town hall meeting in person on Zoom, uh, as well as in the room, uh, from six to eight PM on Tuesday, April sixteenth, uh, here in the Commissioners' chambers. Uh, we will also be having a meeting that day, uh, during the day, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Um, I will second the motion, but also uh, remind everyone that more than one commissioner may be attending the Lincoln Day Dinner on Saturday, I have a feeling it might just be one, but we'll see if it's more than that, but at least just posted and notified.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.